Okay, call me in order. Everyone ready to ask the last thing? And does anyone have any questions or business to add or corrections? We're done. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Nice.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All of them?
Ah.
Approved. In the minutes, and we'll talk about it again, the seventeenth of October, or eighteenth of October is coming up, so we need our project to look forward. There's a calendar, let's talk about that real quick. One that is not on the calendar that I would like you to look at, there's a big sign as you walk through the door. That was for talk about Churchill here.
It's not under us.
No, it's on October. And the last time I heard anything on Churchill was terrific. And so if this is a, again, I think you all ought to try to listen to it or come by and listen. He was really an interesting person. I was just reading an article about one of my favorite poets. Have you ever heard of Banjo Patterson? He wrote The Man from Snowy River and a couple of other, he's the poet laureate of Australia. Anyway, he ended up being a blooper with Churchill and they became past friends. So interesting. So if you ever go to Jasper, you love Banjo Patterson. Really interesting. And a really good poet. A lot of fun. He also wrote Waltz, Matilda, and a couple others. Just fun stuff. Okay, moving on to our report, yes. Several things that, so you all. I didn't introduce you all, but welcome. And we had a request from the county extension agent to put a stove top into our lounge. And with some discussion with Manny and other members of the staff, thought it might not be a bad idea to do that. So we researched it, I researched it. Went to the fire marshals of Merrill, talked to them, they had no problem with that. They thought it might be a good idea. What they want, what the extension office wanted to do was have some classes here using the stove top for classes. But they said I have to go to the zoning boards, to the codes board, to get it approved. Which I did go to the codes board. What they want is a curb and a complete exhaust system above. We'd have to humongous hole into our roof, put a curb, mount a fan, an exhaust fan, and then put a fire suppression system on top of that. So based on about two weeks of discussion with these people and our Joseph Construction, we got a letter back today saying probably a little too expensive boiling water for making some kind of a display or classes I'm cooking. So we're scrapping the idea, so I'm sorry, but I mean, they're looking at fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to put in a three, four hundred dollars to top. I mean, it's crazy. So that's one thing.
So that was a request from UT Extension.
It was a request from the UT Agriculture Center at Peterstown.
Oh, UT Extension has a demo room.
Yeah.
The whole setup, their whole objective is to come over a culinary display system. So I don't know why they didn't do it.
They said it were. I don't know. Cynthia, you want to talk? You talked to the lady. I talked to her a couple times and.
So I met Mary Beth Lena when I was doing a tour over there, Kathleen and Kathy and I went over for a tour when they had an open house. And Mary Beth explained that the demonstration kitchen that they have there on site is very, very small. And so they have to have a remote access, like a room separate where they're watching TV. She was hoping she could use our facility for that.
She came and she had looked at our kitchen and it would be ideal for what they need. And it would also be programmed that we could partner with.
We thought it was a great idea, but it was just too expensive for us to run through all those hoops that they set up for us. So really just, I called Joseph back this afternoon and told him forget it. It's just not worth it. We have too many other items on the fire right now. Okay, we met with the county about the planetarium in the last couple of weeks. Kind of put that up too after a letter from the person who was actually installed the planetarium here in Merrill, or at Heritage High School. And that was like twenty some years ago. He said the equipment is probably past due for dying. And that we would have to replace the bulbs, have to replace most of the equipment. And he didn't think it was worth, and it definitely cannot be moved. So he didn't think it was worth messing with. Manny, in my discussion with Rob French, he still would like to see a planetarium connected somehow with the library. And our comment, or my comment to him was, if he could fund a building and fund the equipment, then Manny said he would love to manage it. But if he has a spare three million dollars or so, then right, we'll go forward with it. So right now, it's, that's that. So we're not pursuing that. Okay, that's been my report. All right, move on to Manny, your report.
First, I just want to tell our new trustee, we only allow phone pans.
Well, that's, I'll bring back my phone.
Storytime is still doing extremely well. The report does say that one of the baby and new storytimes, they had over forty children or babies. They do such a great job over there and just they keep unlocking it, which is fantastic. The RFID, the self-check over there, it's been the kids' life. You know, it's buttons to touch, the screen is very easy. They're having a good time over there. Maintenance was able to create like a little hole there for a book drop for free return there now too. So that's been very helpful over there with the flow of traffic. So they're doing a wonderful job. They did have nature day. Unfortunately, Mother Nature did not comply, so it was raining outside. But that's okay. They had nature day inside. The kids still had a good time. They were planning a scavenger hunt with other ex-crees over there. They did come in, they still had, they were able to get it with that. There will be a fall festival. Fall festival will be October the twenty second. And they'll have The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, a local theater company will be doing that. They're gonna have cotton candy, they're gonna have these like plastic arrows, like a parotry and stuff outside. And then they're gonna decorate pumpkins. Not carving them, they're just using markers to decorate pumpkins. So that should be really cute. Oh, and the Ghostbusters will be there too. They were here for the touch of truck. They were extremely popular. So all the gear and everything. So Ghostbusters will be coming back. The kids can take pictures with them. Some of the new furniture have arrived and it's up in the teen room. And the teen room is being utilized, which is great. Not only Dungeons and Dragons, but teens are going in there just to talk. They play video games. And that's what that room is for. Afternoon, just to hang out. You know, just to have, the teens have their own place that's theirs. So that's great. And I gotta give Chelsea, Chelsea Todd Warner, she manages the teen room in the late afternoons after school. When it's all said and done, that room is gonna be terrific for the kids. I utilize it, which is, that's what it's there for. We also have the plaque, Eileen Kelly plaque. So if you see the teen room, it's right outside the blue on the right hand side. You can get a chance. Chelsea did tease some events later in 2022, so Old St. Nick will be coming. I think it's December twentieth. That was, Old St. Nick had a very busy calendar. So we were able to secure them on the twentieth. And instead of New Year's Eve, it's called New Years Eve. So that is for parents that have little ones that cannot stay up till midnight. It's a time for.
I can't either.
Yeah, I can't either. Yeah, I like that too. So that'll be happening. Under Adult Services, one of our new employees, Diane Benson, she has previous teachings, experience from Ella Cynthia. And she conducted a class here for research skills geared toward high school students and was a complete success. Kathleen can attest to that.
This class, the first one that she had done was to a homeschool group. And she had positive remarks and interaction. The students seemed to learn a lot and the parents were very happy for it. She's working with this Saturday with another cadet or, I'm sorry, I cannot remember the name. Another organization from Alcoa and they are, she will be helping them do research. But we are very excited about initiating relationships with public high schools and junior highs. We are sending out a letter asking if they would like to have her come and teach and how to teach them some internet searching skills, teach them about our databases, teach them how to evaluate sources. So if you have any, if you know anyone who'd be interested in that, she would be great. We'd love to partner with schools.
And that's excellent because that's the role of the library is the outreach. And Diane did such a terrific job in UT, and other entities that does, that's what we're here for. Hot Summer Nights was extremely popular. We had four concerts. We had Wild Booyah, Robinella, The Get Up Band, and Beatles For Sale. And we had three hundred fifty plus, three hundred plus, three fifty.
What, like each one?
Each one. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. And we had people at the Beatles and The Get Up Dance, which was great to see. It was extremely popular. So we're gonna do it again next summer. The great thing is next summer, we have five Thursdays. But I also want two weeks because I love music in libraries. I just think it's such a, just something everyone can relate to, is music. So in the spring, we're gonna have a spring concert series. And the holidays, we already have the opera, we have the schools, we have the flute. But we're also gonna have another, we'll talk about this later, it's a three-piece rockabilly band based out of Gatlinburg, Pigeon Forge, and they played at the Partners in Politics, the Warmins. And so they're gonna come here for the holidays and they're gonna do a holiday set, but also play a couple of like Blue Sweets, shoes, couple of, it's but specific. The majority of the set will be geared towards holiday music. So, you know, that's gonna be coming soon. I don't mind here, but it was very successful. I just want to thank, I want to thank Kathleen, I want to thank Cynthia, I want to thank Anjade, I want to thank Anna, and actually the whole PR team for getting that out there. And it really showed that the hot summer nights before the pandemic, it was like, it was, no pun intended, but it was a hot, hot event in town and it continued because people were like jonesing and ready for music again and having fun. So that was really good. The Beatles band may have been just a little too loud for some. Could not hear what anyone was saying, but everyone had a good. Just a couple of quick reference questions. I thought it was kind of cool that WATE reached out to us about when Lund County changed from central to eastern time. So Brennan and Built Services answered that. And we were credited with the post that came out from WATE. And then also Brennan had a request about that, the Lambert-Paisbilly. And that was the Bank of Merrill in nineteen thirteen. So it was kind of neat.
And what is the shake ring?
I'm sorry. It's at Fairview. It was a store where they like got clothes instead of the shake ring. So I'm, yeah, I go through the church.
I didn't know, I didn't know about the same. Yeah.
When did it happen?
That was the forties. One thing that's mentioned, word for collections, we did a shift with biographies and lodge prints. So they just kind of shifted. So, and that took months. And that was Kathy Thompson. She's not here, but she took that task over. And it's great. There's more space there. This was in the middle of when the war came through and between that, so there was a little pause in action, but it's all good. Cafe, kind of the summer sunset soda, that was the drink of the month. And the cafe along with a member of the PR team is working on a Halloween drink.
Goulee.
It's not goulee, that's a good one, goulee. That's. Yeah. The one that we wanted to go with, I think Vienna took it. Or another place, but we have a pretty, well, they itemed. A member of PR came up and recruited for us. If you haven't seen the gallery display, when you walk in, I'm a little disappointed I don't see any Patriot stuff, but that's okay. It's easy. But that was Josephine as well as Penny. They create these awesome displays and they're working on October. You probably have a kind of an idea where we're going in October, but that one's really cool with the. I think they just answered, right?
Yeah, all the local teams don't even.
Yeah, and there's letters and jackets there.
And there are some photos of local teams that came out of our archives.
Oh, really?
Our, as in.
Yeah. Now, every month Cynthia does the new cards. And for the month of August, we had five hundred and thirty-three cards, which is so far the highest since we've been doing, started doing this, I think, in June. So we have June, July, and August. But August is top, which is incredible. It's great. That's. These are all new cards, right? These are brand new cards, yeah.
Somebody contacted me and said it was, give a hand down, and it was. They were not happy about the process.
Yeah.
I don't actually think it's that easy to get again, but. Yeah. We might want to look at our procedure because I've had contact made. Do what? Well, just like not knowing what they need before they get here. So maybe somewhere we need to put, you need sixteen IDs and you need four proofs of your residency or whatever you need. Because they came with their driver's license that they didn't have like proof of residency, they didn't have. So somewhere, wherever that information is, on the website or on the app or whatever, we need to add what you have to have to get a lottery.
I just say we, you do have that posted. It's on our website. And it's one, you have to have two things. You have to have a picture ID and then you have to have proof of residence dated in the last thirty days.
Well, but if you don't go to the website, somehow they had a paper. So they had to.
We do, like I think we just recently did a Lund County mailer. And even on that, it says one picture ID and proof of residency within the last thirty days.
I don't know where she had gotten.
It can be anything as long.
Okay, you can also.
You can pull it up on your phone.
But also timeout. I will be honest. Don Reagan doesn't get any mail. Don Reagan doesn't have any bills. Tony Reagan has it all.
So nothing.
Have you thought about that?
I don't know if it's in mine.
But if your driver's license has your home address, that alone is not sufficient now. You need one on the same.
We need to make sure it's current, your address is.
Yeah.
Because we let people use ID, even if it's like an out of state ID, but they have a proof of residence that they moved to Merrillville, but haven't updated their card. We let them get a card.
Yeah.
So we need that.
We want them to have a license first.
Or you guys will look at that and see. See if we can make this.
Okay.
And what do we do for Merrillville College kids? Because that was another one.
They just have to have their Merrillville College ID. That's it.
Yeah. So we actually, Savannah and I were at Merrillville College last Thursday and got a very, both got very bad tans because we didn't bring a table. But they had a near the Pearson building. They had a bunch, like the library was there, Parks and Rock was there, but there was other organizations. And students there were filling out for library cards and they decided to have their Merrillville ID. Didn't matter if they lived in, you know, wherever, North Carolina or wherever.
If in future you get any more of those calls, if you could ask them where they got whatever information.
I will. I will ask.
Oh, okay. Excellent.
I will. But the Merrillville College thing, it was all a plastic thing. The children's live plastic thing. And I don't think it was that easy for them.
That's my question. Even facilitated, if they could fill up one at the time and they can.
No, that was not easy for them. My mom called me and he was very frustrated through that whole process.
Really?
Yeah, he was. Like, yeah, very frustrated. So I don't know. I wasn't here. I'm just fielding complaints.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking. We have to be.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Yeah.
Can you report back to us next one?
I think, I think we can, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm, yeah, I was just writing a reminder. Also, in the month of September, I spoke at the Merrillville Downtown Association and spoke with the new commissioners and commissioners. Commissioner Weaver was there as well. That was really neat. And I went very short, which can get, what's happening? Because there were a few people that went very long. I was trying to get this law rolling. It was a football game that night. And I know there was a few people antsy in that room, so. But it was really nice to be with the new commissioners. Also during the month of September, the county has started, has, is participating in a compensation study. And in one that passed was called Evergreen, this one's called MEG, Management Advisory Group. I think they're based out of Virginia or North Carolina, somewhere up there. So the library was participating just like every other department in the county. So for the last couple of weeks, staff had to fill out a questionnaire, which they originally said forty-five minutes, but it was not, it was easily an hour. And then once staff was done, the managers and then myself, we had to look at each one. And that took a good, probably half hour to an hour for each one. So the goal, speaking with Human Resources on Friday, they've already heard back from MEG already. Hopefully they'll have some more information for the end of the calendar year. So we'll see. I think so, yes.
We did the last one.
Yeah.
This is the second one I've done since I've been here for four years. And this is the second one we've done, so. Yeah, I mean, last time they.
One other thing that's not on my update, I just wanted to let everyone know. When I started here, I really, I really appreciate the participation when it comes to the city of Merrillville and Alcoa. But I really want to branch out and reach out to towns in Wallen, Friendsville, Greenback side of Lund County. So one of the ways that I'm looking at that, the Blackberry Farm has, every year they have grants. And specifically, they look at when it comes to children. That's what they like to see their grants for. So what I've been looking at, and this is just in that early stage, but have you ever been to Lowe's or maybe the grocery store, you know, the lockers? So you go and you scan your card and then a locker will open. I'm looking to do that downtown, specifically in their municipal building or maybe another indoor municipal building. So where families, because I've heard the complaints that it takes forty-five minutes just to get up here, then another forty-five minutes to get back. If we could have those lockers that will have materials that the patients have requested, they could drive five to ten minutes. And, you know, we're trying to promote literacy for families and that would be another way. We can't have a library there, but this is the next best thing. And if this goes through, we would be the first library in the state of Tennessee to have this locker. So. Okay.
Right. As our regional director, Arm Polston, in New Jersey, had.
Oh, really?
And women in that in her library. And she sent us information about that.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, Kentucky just set their first one too. And there, there would be CPL as well. And I forgot what the county was, but I thought that was kind of funny. But that's something that's in the fire, just to do that. And it's successful. Now I'd like to see it go towards Louisville, Friendsville, Greenback. I'd like to have Rockford, you know, the different counties. But I like to have them indoors. Some have them outside, especially in towns in U of A around there, vandalism or anything. Let's have it indoors. So, yeah.
Get them a library.
It's embarrassing. Well, they try to enter a meeting in town. Yeah.
There's a bar, it's seven thousand.
Well, that's the other, yeah, that's the other location. Did you want to talk about the roof at all? Do you want to?
Yeah. We, the county passed funding for the roof this past Thursday night. I talked to the branch manager of Escobar Roofing, who is out of Knoxville. And he was ready to go, but hasn't heard from anybody. So I asked him, I called him again yesterday and he's not responded yet. But we told him that we were ready. What he wants to do is have a meeting with Manny and the staff here to see what kind of problems you feel that the roof might have or with them working on a roof, what you might have inside the building. And he wants to make sure there are no problems. His goal is to have the roof finished by Christmas. If he can start soon. And so we're hoping that, I told him the money was there now, so. Go right ahead. So we'll see what happens in the next couple of things. And I'll be out of town. So I asked him to call you to see what's going on. Um.
Now, does the guy, the senior maintenance director involved with all?
Yes, so Don Stallion is gonna be the project manager, not me, yeah.
I'm trying to get him up.
Yeah.
Less involved and get us more involved in this, so we can go ahead, we got to be projects going on and going nowhere fast.
Yeah, that's something similar.
One of the things that concerned me about the roof and the conversation I had with with Jacob was what happens if it starts getting cold? Because this is a heat sensitive roof, he said they come out with a new product that is a cold sensitive seal sealer. So that they can do it down to twenty degrees, so that should be no problem. Clean down on Christmas, uh so that that's a good thing, hopefully any day.
That is a, got the roof approved, just matter of start. Someone has to tell him to start.
Yeah, so someone, we spoke briefly to Randy Vineyard, I know um purchasing was gonna reach out. I don't, yeah, I don't know if they have or not, but I'm sure it was just voted on Thursday, so I'm sure it'll be, be so.
He's, he said that she gonna, whatever it was Katie is gonna do it on, she gonna call on Friday and he said yes, but. Nothing's happened, so. That's why I reached out to him yesterday, see if we can get moving. One, one question, who does the pic pictures, photographs?
Um. Those I think were were Catherine, right? You did those for hot summer nights.
Yes.
We do. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, so.
Really, really thanks for that.
I think some of them, I mean, I always work for hot summer nights, I could, I'll get them that too.
Okay. Yeah, let's see Angela here.
She emailed us that she was sick, so.
Okay. You wanna talk about our attendance at the board foundation meeting or you want me to?
Um.
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Because I've got a under a new business, but how many of you have actually have a copy of this? Now, I know you don't.
I have, I have copies of the finalized one, I didn't know how many people had them, so I only made three, sorry.
Does anybody have copies? This, this is a project draft that was done in two thousand and eighteen. And it was for the upstairs and the downstairs and detailing what should be done in every area of the library. And to go ahead and start construction. And it was voted on and accepted by the board then. Um, back, I think around two twenty seventeen, I had a twenty nineteen, so, but you all though have copies. Let's just, uh, let's make everything.
And and the thing is, just for a preference, I want to do a new one. Because now there's a new board and there's a new administration, so new ideas, so, but.
A tremendous amount of work when ended this, you know, some of the committees worked.
Is that the strategic plan, I can't tell what was.
Yes.
But they had, they had broken up every department and every, like i- in the library and. Uh Kathy Hammond, Casey Williams, Angela Quick, Dick Urges, Chris Sorrell, Kathy Norman, Kathy Thompson, uh Janay Bruin. And James Gentry were on most of these committees and they took every part of the library and redid it. And so we need to take a long look at this. We'll probably, it'll take us a while to get these reprinted and then I'd like you to take a look at them and then let's go forward again. Because the four years have gone by, a lot of things have changed and I'm not sure that we really want to do everything that's in here the way it says it is.
I, yeah, I really, what I'm gonna do and I haven't even read yet, I want to read it from day one and figure out what happened and then creating a new one. You know, like, like Andy was saying, it's just, you have new board members and things change, you know. What's that now?
Why would you wanna duplicate that?
Yeah, since that's.
It took almost two years to have this. Something you wanna read.
Of the project.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanna reinvent that.
No, no.
I have your some out there though.
It might, yeah.
I haven't read it, but I just, I don't want.
So, 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 my, my recommendation is for you to read it.
Yeah.
And if you think there's pertinent information in there, you need to see to go to the next step, great. I don't know if we should read this just to be reading it, unless we.
Yes. Okay.
I don't need that.
I know we want to know.
It's, it's not passed.
All of this was.
So the ones. Andy, that is the draft, this is what I have as the final.
This is.
Much smaller.
Oh, yeah, that's too.
If you, yeah, if you're mindless, I'll read.
You read.
Okay.
And that's this.
And one of the first things was that you're even demolishing the book drop. So anyway, when you get these, we'll talk about this in the future. Uh, and the reason that that it came up is. Manny and I went to the foundation and you were talking about them raising money and. They had basically said that they want to see what our plans are for the lower level and the rest of the library going forward before they want us. Start looking for money. We get it all. Discussion because they already had budgets for three projects and have raised the money, but that was. Went good enough, so. Yeah, I, I left not happy, but I didn't, I don't, I hope I wasn't too bad.
No one was throwing chairs.
And I, there's might be a little history there where they feel they might want a little more. Something more concrete, pictures, visuals, definitives.
Yeah. Talked about that. And and I understand that. So anyway, that, that's kind of their. Uh, they are going to be doing a, a letter and a request for this fall uh around Christmas time for, for donations for the library. So this will be their first effort other than sending out a. Request with the wrong spelling of author. Hopefully they'll throw those away. Okay, being uh more positive. The friends report, it's always exciting.
Yes, we had a fantastic quarterly sale at the weekend in September. And um it was one of our best yet, so we got our sales committee looking at what, what we did right and uh. Um, not that we did too much wrong at all, but, and we have some great elevator operators again, this is Janay, thank you. And.
Does that count for Chinese? Leadership training.
It was an hour, it was an hour, yeah. So uh the day before this, I would go to a call from the Friends of Lexington Kentucky Library. And they wanted to come down and uh see what we do. And it was a little disruptive, but we managed to give them a tour and they were very impressed. They went home with not only a bunch of pictures of what we do downstairs, but also uh some forms that we use. When we're tallying up book sales, uh some other things that that we do that they thought best practices. And this Friday, we're having Nashville Friends of the Library come. Uh, for a tour, but also for training in eBay on what we do uh in eBay for our online sales. Uh Diane Rocco is our director in eBay, uh she and I will be attending the Friends of the Library Annual Meeting in Nashville. And Diane's gonna be one of the speakers about what we do. Um, and we've been learning a lot from other libraries as well, Brentwood Library. Um, about what they do, they actually use Amazon and we've, we had heard from Lexington. That uh Amazon had charged some outrageous fees and what we found out from Brent, Brentwood was uh forty percent. Forty percent of the money. So we're not going to Amazon anytime soon, we'll stick with eBay. So, uh just before the sale as well, um and I know Dick is here to tell you, we, I think it was our largest donation ever. Uh, but we got a, a bookstore that closed and donated everything. And so we have boxes upon boxes upon boxes of books that we are trying to make our way through. Um, we think we probably have a whole uh library of paperbacks uh down there. And we, we actually put the paperbacks together in a lot. Uh, like it's finally said, we used to throw them away to recycle, but we put them together in lots. Um, I know I sold a lot of them yesterday for sixty nine dollars. So they're still very popular and are, besides the uh one type of list called variation list, the paperbacks are one of our best sellers. So. It's uh, it's rolling, rolling along rather well downstairs. Rather than the work everybody's doing.
It's always fun to go, I hope you all came to the book sale, it's really fun and they had donuts and candy this time too. Thank you. Hey, Wes.
Hello.
All kinds of things.
I do, yeah, well, not a whole lot has changed up really since last month, but we added some additional training sessions all the way through November. Um, the biggest thing we have coming up, just to remind everybody, is of course the annual trusted workshop October the eighteenth. Um, I see you have on there, you may be changing your meeting date, I'm sorry. That seemed to coincide with lots of board meeting dates, we've had lots of boards that have been changing their dates around so people could attend, but we're grateful for that. And I've, I've turned in all the registration forms that I got last time. Um, one thing I want, if you need one, I have, there's one, of course electronically that I sent out with my report, but I also have extras if you would like. Um, and one thing I want to point out, if you have any dietary restrictions that we need to know about, just let. This information we forgot to include, which is terrible, so I'm sorry, but we'll just let us know about that. Um, we're excited, we're gonna be talking about, you know, director um and board relationships and roles and responsibilities. We're gonna have the Department of Human Resources coming to talk about anti-generational, um the multi-generational communications in the workforce, which is really important. Um, and then we'll be talking about future public libraries and trends. Uh, and also um we'll have Friends Tennessee Libraries um President Kathy Dooley Smith speaking. This is what, so we're, it's a good time for everybody to kind of and network and talk with each other and learn. Um, we have pretty good numbers for our agents so far, so nothing is competition. Um, we have lots of trainings happening, we've kicked off our four um session virtual course about connecting with your library. Um, which has been a virtual um part session with Thriving Libraries, that's going really well, we had our second session this past minute. Um, so we're pretty excited about that going, we have our annual sub reading conference, I know it just ended, Chelsea's not here to go. Um, I know it just ended, but you know, this is the time where you end your program and six of them, I know. Um, so you end your program and then you look at, see what went right, what went wrong, you know, um and then. Forge ahead and start planning for next year, so we'll be having a sub reading conference. Um, and so we're pretty excited about that. Uh, then we also have library management creating a positive workspace um to our workplace culture to focus on community retention. So we'll be having Betsy Cunningham from Intas come. Yes, and we've had her for at least two other trainings, I think, she always does a really good job and sparks ideas for our library leaders, so. We're, we're excited. Um, we are, our librarians are doing a lot of work this month. Um, this is, this is the month where all of them can complete the annual public library survey, we just went about last um month. Which is our big data gathering, gathering um survey that they, they. Report on everything that happened in the last fiscal year, all the statistics, borrowers, collection, programming, um computer users, anything and everything they report on. Um, and that report comes to our region for edit checks or to the state for edit checks, onto I M L S at the federal level for edit checks. And it goes on to inform um everybody about what public libraries are doing. And so we're pretty excited about that, um they have until the end of September to complete it, I know Manny said he's about finished, so he is ahead of the game, which is good. Um, so that's a, a major um thing. Another thing that I wanted to talk to them about that I handed out, I did not send this early because uh, we got these earlier than we normally do. Um, so we are sending these out, this is the analysis report for the standard survey that library directors do in July. And um this just goes through and it lists out each category that we look at in the standards, the state standards for non-municipal libraries. We look at governance, we look at planning, we look at technology, facility, personnel, community relations, all those different categories. Um, and then the standards within each one, this is meant to be an in-house evaluation. Um, you all do very well, I mean, I think you meet almost every standard. Uh, there's just a few that are not, there, that have not been met and, and so. Really hard for me to say you need to focus on certain ones, but um, you know, you use this uh as a, a tool to explain your law right. Um, when you're looking at budget requests, when you're doing other things, we encourage everybody to look at these and review what's being met, what's not being met, what can be met. Um, certain things are hard to meet and taken, I mean, and other things are not, but you all do an excellent job as always. Um, really the crowning jewel of the region, I said that before, but. Um, so that's, this is just that analysis report. Um, so just a little brief overview, the first column is what was reported last fiscal year and then this fiscal year. And then we go through and look at statewide, all the other level five libraries, who's meeting, what percentage are meeting those standards? And then that final column is all levels of libraries across the state, so just to kind of let you see where we are. Um, and again, it doesn't go anywhere, nobody gets dinged for not meeting anything, it's not, they're not requirements, the standards are goals for our libraries. So, you want to bear, so give yourselves a pat on the back for that. Um, that's really mainly, that's mainly what I had, um besides the recent statistics, of course, and just, yeah, trusted workshop, so.
This had our, our first uh board chairs Zoom meeting.
Yes, we did, we had our first, um, so as most of you know, um, it became law, the regional boards, the old regional boards that we had for a long time. Um, went away in June and so what we have replaced it with uh is quarterly um meetings with all board chairs. Of all the different library boards that we have, and we have twenty library boards, so we had roughly eight, I think, in attendance. Um, and we'll do that quarterly and we'll talk about different things that come up, running meetings and all those different things that come up for board chairs.
It was fun listening to what other people had to say, what, what really blew my mind is. Some, some of these board chairs are over, or some of the directors are over. I mean, their library, but also libraries at schools, which just, I can't, I can't imagine that. Uh, that I, I mentioned that to Manny and he said, well, he had that in his past.
I do not recommend.
Now, who, you said?
My previous, not in Foxborough, but in Swarthwaite, I was, I oversaw the schools, the, the swamps, um. School libraries and high school, the two middle schools and the four elementary schools.
Oh.
And I do not.
That has part of the public.
Two of the students. Two of the students that they had that.
Well, I think, um, so, the Ray County Board Chair is a school librarian. I don't think we have, I don't think we have any. Because ours are separated, ours are separated where they're just over the public libraries. And then they have, but it could be that they work in the school libraries. Cause we had, we had two, one current. Yes, we have, so.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine that. That was.
No, yeah.
Lots to keep up with. Um, but they, one of them is a high school librarian, the other is a elementary school librarian. But they also serve as the board chairs for their public libraries.
That's right, yes.
And then one was a retired, um, school librarian also. So, we have lots of, we have lots of school librarians on our, even on our public.
Anyway, it was kind of, it was.
Yeah, it's, it's neat. So, we just kind of picked random topics to talk about. And we'll keep going with it. It's good to get everybody to.
Okay, any other, any questions, Liz? For October fifteenth, we, are we gonna Crossville or are we gonna talk about how we?
You have to walk.
I wanna go to.
Okay. I see, I, I often, I can go.
Hopefully, we'll meet, we meet here. And drive over, drive over to Crossville. There's an hour difference in time.
Yes, they're on central time.
So, it's great.
We want to, we need at least an hour and a half before, maybe even a little sooner than that. And we could stop at Bucky's other way.
It's on the interstate.
Yeah, easier.
So, we're meeting here at what time?
Um. Let's see, it starts at nine.
Registration is nine, five.
So, we could, we could meet here at. Eight fifteen, eight thirty?
So, it's ten thirty or.
Ten thirty, yeah.
Ten thirty. Yes, yes.
What, what time do you think?
Eight thirty, eight thirty. Eight thirty, that gets pretty.
And meet here at eight thirty? And, oh, we need more than one driver?
Yeah.
I'll drive, my car seats. That's how you were said. Okay, and hopefully, as many can come as fast. It was like three years ago or two years ago, and it was, it was a lot of fun. All right, while we're talking about that. Before we jump into new business, because of, of this, there's a good chance that we would not be back here for the meeting. So, you wanna have, you wanna reschedule the meeting, or do you just wanna skip? We don't have really anything planned to dispatch. Five hundred thirty.
Well, what do we do in November? Do we, we made it in November, but we don't need to be skipped, correct?
Right.
So, is that gonna make?
That has been our habit.
Is that gonna be, you know, is that gonna make?
Include, um, cause I know.
Wow.
The next policy is gonna be a disaster policy.
It is a disaster.
It is the disaster policy.
Yeah.
Uh, no, then we need to make to.
Yeah. It'll be eleven or the twenty.
All we have is that in November, we're.
Part of the emergency plan and the sustainability.
Okay.
So.
Actually, it's.
I don't know if it would actually.
It's, it's actually, yeah.
I only, so far, I only have two things possibly for the agenda in November. I try to like keep up with what's going on, so. I don't think we would make it any longer. One of the things I added.
Yeah, that'll go fast.
Yeah. That's up to you all.
I can't introduce you guys. Best ever committees.
So, you're saying we could move, we could move the October, September to November, it still wouldn't be?
I don't, I don't think so unless a bunch of things come up at this meeting that we have to talk about.
I'd like to see us do that. Yeah, I, cause the end of, the twenty-fifth is totally out for me, the eleventh is most likely.
On Tuesdays.
And this will give me time to meet with Cynthia and Arjuna about the new cards. You know, this will give time and I'll start reading this.
So, is that okay if we cancel?
We need to make like an official motion to do that.
Can I have a motion to cancel the experience? Second, Susan? Okay, all in favor? Be opposed? Okay.
Vacation. Get together.
All right, the building schedule closing.
Oh, actually, go back to old business. Old business?
That was open.
Oh, no.
Sorry. The, uh. Thing about the selection of reading and library materials policy. We talked about this the last time. And had some discussion. Is there any more discussion on the, on the policy?
It, it's a different policy. This is the being a lot.
Any discussion on that one?
The, the collection development policy was approved. This is the collection development of the genealogical. So, it's like a separate policy. They have very similar titles, though.
Sorry. You want another, any comments on it? We're done with this one, right?
Yeah.
I was, I was really surprised at the range of materials that you're willing to accept. And, and so, I think that's great. Really terrific. You guys have to live with it, so that was not a problem, right?
No, no. As it says here, our scope is to support the local history and that incorporates a lot of facets.
But anything is basically what this says.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, uh, the reference librarians will be, uh. Who removes the materials? And it says, goes to the collection manager.
I'm sorry. Where?
Under donations, it says, remove materials will be made, remove materials will be made by preference library librarians. Conjections with the collections manager. Who is that?
That would be Kathy Thompson right now. It would be myself and staff and folks in the reference department who, who are focusing on that. And when we have questions or concerns, then we, uh, we also talk to Kathy. And then, if we have concerns, we will go and talk to.
Okay, so it's not just one person's statement?
Yeah, although, no, no.
Well, is this practice done periodically or is it a annually? How, how do you go?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hill.
Is this, is this practice done, uh, annually or is?
It's an ongoing practice. For instance, um, last year, I think, we received several boxes of donations from a family. And so, um, Brendan is the one who looked at them and evaluated them and checked to see if we have them already. And see how it, see if it does fit in with the collection. So, as far as donations, just when we get them.
Do you respond, see, someone gives you a. If someone gave you a, uh, a series of questions. And you decide that they were not appropriate or needed for the library, do you respond back to them?
What we do is whenever anyone donates something, we have a form that basically says. We are, we will do whatever we want with them. We own them. Um, I always add the caveat that if we are going to take them, we intend to use them. Um, but if, if for some reason we cannot use them, and almost always they say, this is fine. We donate them to, we, the front or the genealogy department because genealogy society. Um, and sometimes they have, are able to give them to another library. And so, they're still being out, they're still out there being, giving. To people.
Right.
Okay.
So, they, they're not just.
Right, right. We don't, I don't think we've ever just tossed anything out. We try to make, we try to spread them out.
And you are going to make a list of fees?
Um, yeah, I don't.
There's that, sorry.
Okay, what we have is a fee schedule. Okay, is a fee schedule that we, that had been here in use since I've started and that's been almost seventeen years. Um, and what we're doing right now is charge seven fifty a book and item. We have a specialized collection called the Garner photos. They were, um, donated a couple decades ago. They were photos taken by a local photographer in the, between eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, ten. And they're really a special, unique collection. We own the copyright to those. So, those are the ones that I normally have an issue, normally have to, um, charge a fee. Or, and it's, um, if it's just a one-time use or they just want a photo, a tip or J-Tag, it's seven fifty. Um, this, recently, we had, um, an organization from. Us, uh, doing an exhibit at a publishing company in South Carolina. Who wanted to use a four-end exhibit. And so, we, so we charged them a little bit more. And when we do that, just so you know, we ask them, it's a requirement that they do not put the full-scale picture out there for anyone to copy. It defeats the purpose of owning the copyright and having it paid. They're just going to give it away. But it's mostly the Garner photos that we have been charging for. And it's a very minimal amount, seven fifty. But, again, that hasn't been updated for maybe twenty years. So, we may wanna talk. We may want to talk about it at some point, the admin team or something. Did that answer?
Okay. Any other questions on this? Hey, do I? Take a motion to approve this in form? Just a second.
Yeah.
Be opposed? Thanks. Thank you.
A lot of work.
Okay, skip that. Okay, going on to new business. Uh, well, let's, let's grab the, the policy timeline, like, uh, what we're looking at. Our reviews and so that the next policy review, which was supposed to be the emergency change plan, will be moved back. Uh, into November.
I will amend this and I'll put a new one in the November.
All right, Brad, you're in your packet, your building closures. From the county for us, for the library. And is there any discussion of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a lot of discussion about this. I have a lot of questions about this. Um, and I've had several emails about this too. I, I am the go-to, apparently, when it comes to the library. Um. I don't understand. Let's take New Year's, for example. The county employees get Friday and Monday as their holiday. Yet, the library is closed Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Now. I don't really know why we're closing on Friday. Because Saturday is an open day. Uh, and if the county employees are getting two days for the holiday, then why is the library basically getting three days? Friday, Saturday, and Monday. You know, cause we're closed Sundays all the time. So, that, that's, that's a wash, right? Um, so, there's a lot of those like that. Like Easter holiday, Labor Day weekend, Thanksgiving holiday, Christmas holiday, and New Year's holiday. That the county employees are getting. Like one day, but the library is getting two days. Are most library employees Monday through Friday employees for Tuesday, Saturday?
Okay, all right. I'm gonna pass this over to Arjuna. I'll just.
In, in the, in the employees handbook, it says, employees are paying twelve holidays.
Yes.
Okay, so here's the point.
Yes, to clarify that.
So, I'm looking at the library employees do not get more holidays. What has always been hap, what we've always tried to do with the building closure. Is put county building closures in line with, um. The, with the library. The library is following the county building closures. Their buildings closed, we're gonna close our buildings. When we have holidays that we're paid for. We don't get more pay for them. Is that correct? You do the HR, so. I don't, sorry. We don't get, well, we don't get paid for like a Saturday if we're closed. We don't get paid a holiday for that.
Exactly.
But it falls in between two closed days. So, the holidays that we would get paid, so if the county has holidays for employees on the Friday and the Monday. We're gonna get holiday pay for that Friday and that Monday. If we're closed Saturday and Sunday, you don't get paid for those days.
So, why are we closing Friday? Why do we not just take our holiday on Saturday?
Cause we can't get paid.
Because we can't get paid. The fixed.
I can call HR, just in practice, they have been like, well, that's a paid holiday in front of us.
Yeah, like, okay.
Yeah.
But, but you all basically are getting twenty days. And I know they're not all paid, and that's not the point.
It's just a closure.
It's the closures that people don't like.
Okay, so here's the.
Especially now that we're closing.
Yeah, now that we're closing. If you look at how many days of service all the other departments offer. And then, you compare that, how, how many days of service we offer.
But you can't compare apples and oranges. And that's what you're trying to do. So, they, there are six-day operation versus a five-day.
We're a seven-day operation.
Right, yeah.
So.
That's apples and oranges there. So, I, I just don't. Well, when you get information from the community that says, well, why are they closed on Friday and Saturday of Labor, and Monday of Labor Day weekend? Well, I don't know.
So our staff have a holiday?
Well, I understand that.
What would be your recommendation?
Um well, like on the Easter holiday weekend, don't close on Friday, close Saturday, Sunday.
Is that?
Although that's good Friday.
Which.
It's not a federal holiday.
It's not.
Good Friday is not a federal holiday. But like the county, other county employees, if you're in a county.
Because let me explain that to you, because they have foregone Columbus Day, which is a federal holiday, to have a Friday.
But we don't have, we don't close Columbus Day.
Right?
But what I'm saying is, so the county has, we're all county employees, so we've got some county employees. Maybe Anna just asked, this is, this is.
I can add, it's just that when I inherited making this, I was went off the ones that had been previous and it was like.
Right.
If it falls where it's the Friday and Saturday or Friday and Monday, put the Saturday off, so that's what I did.
And it never means that library employees get more paid holiday.
I understand that, but you have twenty days, whereas the county employees have thirteen.
But you're comparing, as as you just said, you're comparing apples and oranges.
I just don't understand, what's the percent? Um thirteen divided by twenty versus six days out of seven.
Six and five.
Six, yeah, five, six, what's that, what's that fraction in order to say?
I think I think I have a bigger issue with Christmas holiday and the New Year's day, it looks like there. We added a day in each one of those, that that one that one bothers me a little more than than the Easter holiday. And that's because, again, the county added a day, so we're, so the county now gives three Christmas days and. On New Year's, you're getting the twenty-ninth and the first off.
But for Christmas, you all have Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday.
Well, Christmas is is. Chris- Christmas is Monday and what is it here, Chris, the county gets December twenty-second, which is the Friday.
Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, so they're getting, county employees are having the same Christmas break as we're, I guess you could say.
Instead of the.
It's the same day.
So Christmas. Close Friday. You put Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday.
Right.
They they just leave out Sunday, you put Sunday in, if you extract Sunday, it won't look so bad. Because that's what the county done.
So if we take out Sundays.
If you got one, two, three.
Already closed Sundays right now, yeah.
Thanks.
So they have, it's an extra day there and an extra day in New Year's.
There are so many Christmas days.
Right.
That are the twang.
It's better.
I think, especially the way Christmas changes every year, I think we're gonna have to look at this every year.
I mean, you're.
Well, I think there needs to be an established number of days for each holiday. Whatever that number is and and us being closed on Sunday has thrown a whole new ball game out there, you know, that.
It was actually even worse, it was actually even worse when we were open seven days, because then we had to put the Sundays on there. And it looked even more, this has always been a, but what what historically, what we were trying to do is if. The county employees were doing it, then we're county employees, we're doing it, we're not getting more pay, we're not getting more holiday. It's just in law.
It's the closures.
Yeah.
But the public, that's what.
But I do see what you're saying, though.
Yeah, they're like, why were they closed Saturday, Sunday and Monday?
For like.
For Labor Day, I don't know, you know, I mean, we need to think about that. Because if the public's commenting and saying why, then I gotta question you why.
And expect.
We agree with that.
And I'll be, I'll tell you, we're not talking.
We haven't.
We've not seen one girl.
I haven't seen her. Good, because you'd be violating those rules.
We don't ever talk to each other, I'll be honest. But I think you have, we have to rethink because we are closed on Sunday, you know, that Friday, December twenty-second and Friday, December twenty-ninth. Should be open on that, because we're we're gonna be closed on Saturdays, you're, I I know what you're saying as far as following the county schedule. But it's not the same, again, you look at that Friday and move it to the Saturday, you're closed on Saturday, that's the county's Friday.
And you're still gonna get paid for your holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah, but your staff, you know, I mean, we're.
I don't know if we would get paid, if we're if we're closed on Saturday, that's the question.
That's the problem, man, payroll possibly is the one who would need to.
Yes.
It would say, because if if they say, you're gonna work Saturday for free, then.
But they're not gonna do that, they're not gonna do that, no, no, they're not gonna do that.
So let me ask, it's, they're gonna get.
And it's there's a rule that you're trying to.
As far as if it falls between these two days, I can't remember exactly how it's written.
Who works Saturdays? People work Tuesday through Saturday to get a five-day week?
Some do, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that the same?
People.
No, it it rotates, it rotates, it's Saturday.
It rotates. We don't wanna cheat anybody, but it's just, it's just being closed so many more days in addition to the Sundays.
Would you? Would you recommend, and again, this wasn't, we're not trying to put the wool over anyone's side, we basically just looked at what the, you know, this was set the memo, that's all. Would you feel more comfortable if we were open on Friday, the twenty-second December and Friday, the twenty-ninth of December with that?
Those two for sure.
Yeah.
And I don't understand this Thanksgiving holiday, what is this Wednesday, the twenty-second of November, five to nine, what is that?
We close at five o'clock at five o'clock on Wednesday, the Thanksgiving Eve, we close at five o'clock, that's all.
That's fair.
I got you, I got you, I know, I just, I was like.
Yeah.
I added it in there.
Yeah.
And I had a question once, I was like, because I didn't, but that makes sense, yes, yeah, that makes sense.
And I and I even wondered about Monday, January seventh, but I understand why. Because I went back and looked at several years.
Took us up to the top, the first is the first.
She's talking about the first is the Sunday and and I always.
So that's one years.
Yeah.
So back on the state.
If this, if the holiday falls on a Sunday, you get the Monday, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I understand that. But for Labor Day, it should really be closed Saturday, only get, everybody only gets Monday.
And you are, and you're closed on Sunday anyway, so you're getting too good, Sunday, Monday.
So you're also saying Labor Day, not that Saturday, sorry, I'm just trying to write all these down.
Okay. But it really, yeah, and if if they. Don't, how is, what's, if they don't work on a holiday. Or they do work on holiday. No, there's there's some.
Yeah.
We're gonna remove more Sundays, twenty-two to sixteen.
I think what I'd like to see is.
You're gonna go back HR, run this to get official, you know, what we're saying is our best. But let's see HR come back, say whatever process that we are pursuing, given that we do it.
I will say, I talked to them today and they did say like if we were not, if a Friday or something was said, you know. We're gonna be open that day, that would just be regular work hours, they would have to do something special on their end, but it would just be work hours. Um but I don't know if like, I I don't think there's a way to make Saturdays. Like paid holiday days, so we would just be, I, let me talk to HR, yes, about that.
A lot of that coming November around.
Rewrite, rewrite and bring it back.
Yes, yeah.
This is for next year, that that is.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have plenty of time.
And and it's, their statement is in the handbook too, if one of these official block county public library holidays falls on a regularly scheduled day off. Over full-time employee and exchange day may be taken into convenience of the library, and that's the policy that we follow.
Yes, so like it's.
So there's a work, there's an option there, we don't want anybody to lose.
I don't think that covers, that doesn't cover.
No, nobody's losing anything of that.
Yeah, that's like if they work Tuesday through Saturday, but there's a holiday Monday, they take a different day off so they don't get paid for forty-eight hours, so. That's why that's there.
But that's not gonna happen, it's more of that. But just by removing Sundays, that cuts four days. So make your twenty down sixteen.
I think Ken, I think Ken's trying to pull over, he just kind of followed how every year it happens, so, you know. We have time.
I don't think this is just a new, we're just coming, it's Sunday, yeah.
We're gonna move this to the to the next meeting.
So we can vote on this next.
Well, I just give last. And I don't know the answers, so I need to know the answers.
I didn't want to push this at all, because we already have this. Thank you. So you have a.
It's the library closure staff development day.
Okay, yeah, November eighteenth.
Yeah, so and I guess this has happened in the past and I want to continue, it's likely to be closed for staff development day. And issue would be a special one, seeing it's my first one, and I want everyone to do it together as a team, I know. In the past, departments have broken off, but I really want to bring in the team concept, we're gonna have Chief Chris come and speak to the staff, we're gonna have. Several um. With his demonstrations uh for various software uh that we use, so everybody here knows exactly how to use. Who and various other um entities, um we're gonna have. Stations about communication as well, so we're gonna have a little fun too, you know, but this is a time for. The entire staff to work together, um and hopefully.
We've touched this in the past and the library has really profited by doing this, so we would like the the library is asking. The board to vote in, approve a close that one day.
What did they do, the last one?
Yeah, last year.
The last July.
July. Last, oh, last year.
Okay, so it's been last year.
Yeah. So.
When are you wanting to?
November eighteenth.
Friday.
So do I have a motion to close the library on November eighteenth for your work section?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
You oppose? Motion carries. And you're welcome to come, right? No?
No.
I.
We are not staff.
Yeah, we've been in the past, it makes some staff uncomfortable, again, this is speaking for having trustees there, isn't it? I don't wanna.
Okay.
That's your role, that's not.
Yeah, I mean.
That's you all.
Oh, well, thank God.
Sure.
What time she want we are?
Do you want me to do a motivational speech or what?
Communication.
Okay, we we rescheduled the October meeting, we canceled it. This project.
Yeah, I'm gonna read it, I'm gonna give you a report.
It's really interesting to go through this this one, I went through it this week and one of the first things was. The moving of the cafe downstairs, it was part of a plan, one of the reasons was because it lost. I think it's at thirty thousand dollars, thirty fifty thousand dollars.
Losers.
Yeah, so what what they wanted to do is open it to the outside, pick up traffic off, rebuild, whatever. But that that was four years ago, when it wasn't, if you looked at the budget and the manager report, it's. So I'm not sure that's a positive statement, but.
I was supposed to leave at six thirty, so I'm late.
Okay, we have, we have, thank you, Doc. Alright, we have some friends' funding requests. That are in there, have. Everybody looked at that? First one is for, question, Matt York. These are songs of the highwayman.
Do we need to expect these individually or can we do them all?
Do them all once, and the second one is for Molly Jolly Jubilee with the warmens and the third one is Fall Festival. And the funding request is for twelve hundred and fifteen dollars. So do I have a motion? I have a second, okay, all in favor of that moving to the friends? You opposed? Thank you. So do you, will you be getting that?
Do you think that's successful?
Yeah, I think that's. Any other new business? Hearing nothing, wanna go over the important dates, uh don't forget the eighteenth. Everyone is welcome to any of these commission meetings, I'd like to go and kill a few hours. Uh Manny and I, I have a host, we have a lot of them, but I. Hey, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, thank you, bring it up.